And join me to pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And good afternoon, all of the partners. This June something twentieth county council meeting to order. Five of my co-council members are present. Chase is not present. Kristina, the author's office is with us. First on the agenda is Mr. Barry Ritter, Ritter Strategic Services. He's going to speak to us about EMS. He's also handed out to everyone something for your reading leisure. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am Barry Ritter, co-founder of Ritter Strategic Services. My company is a 911 public safety consulting firm that we established here in Indiana about seven years ago. Prior to having this consulting company, I was the state 911 director. I managed the 911 program for all 92 counties out of the treasurer's office and state 911 board. Prior to that, I managed the PSAT and I'm a retired police officer out of the city of Richmond. So my entire adulthood has been involved in either local or state government and public safety. And in the last seven years, we've had the opportunity to walk, work in between 25 to 30 counties in Indiana. And we were formed for the purpose of representing local government. Working on behalf of commissioners, councils, sheriffs, 911 direction, public safety boards, and what gave today's world of public safety and 911. I think the first time I actually did work here in Fulton County on behalf of commissioners, it was to settle like a $200 phone bill for Gail. And that's been a few years ago. She was gracious enough to reach out and ask my company to come back to work on behalf of commissioners and councils and citizens in this EMS project. PowerPoint presentation that you have before you is not a presentation that I would follow verbatim tonight, but we have used that in the community engagement programs that we have done. As you all are all probably aware, you currently have a contract with Luther and EMS to provide AMES service in the county. And that contract will expire in 2025. It was a 10-year contract. And so Gail and EMS board officers opted to do their due diligence for us to come in and develop a strategic plan and identify the functional ambulance that would be needed in and request for proposal to determine how Fulton County would provide for EMS service in the future. Interestingly, the one segment of public safety that is not dictated by state law that you shall provide is EMS. And so each community, township, or county addresses it differently or handles or provides for it differently. And so it's up to the elected officials here to determine how best to provide for EMS service in the future. So in this strategic planning study, it was important to understand what the community wants. And so our first meeting was with the EMS board. And there were several community representatives that attended that meeting back in January. We have met with business community. And the first one was in Akron. We have met and talked to school officials, elected officials at the county, and the local owner here in Rochester. We have met with the Fire Chiefs Association. We hosted a community event just about three weeks ago at Fairgrounds for community members to attend, and several council commissioners were there. We have scheduled two additional community meetings yet this month. One will be in Grass Creek, the other will be in Akron. Those are being publicized to provide citizens an opportunity to learn about those meeting dates and times for my team to hear from those citizens. And we've reached out to the school superintendents here in the county to have a discussion with them. And I'm here tonight to, one, tell you about what we've done thus far, but also to provide you the opportunity to either ask questions or provide comments to me. Or my email and phone number is in that PowerPoint to encourage you. If you go away tonight, if you think about EMS or you talk to your constituents and you have questions, you have the opportunity to provide input back to us. We originally were going to have our work wrapped up in August, but we just recently extended that agreement with commissioners, another 60 days to provide ample opportunity for everyone to have input. Why is this important to you? Because it costs money. And being able to have the time to have discussions about how you're going to finance and how you're going to pay for some level of EMS service to be provided in the county. And we all know that most counties are not flustered with cash in their general fund. And they're looking at other opportunities to be able to generate revenue, either through public safety, local income tax. And most recently, you know, the General Assembly provided for additional lift for EMS specific. And being able to identify what that rate would be and allow your financial planner to identify what level of revenue that might generate. There are two facets that determine what level of EMS service can be provided. The first is the data. And my team is looking at the data to determine to what level does EMS need to be provided across the county. Do you need one ambulance? Do you need two ambulances? Or do you need 10 ambulances based on the data? And the data is the run volume, response times, take into account transports out of the county to trauma centers or to other hospitals, staffing. But the other part is the financial piece. What's realistic? What can the county afford to pay in a stipend to a provider to guarantee one, two, five, or X number of ambulances in a community and the associated responsibilities that you might impose, the expectations? It's important to note that, you know, in EMS, we're responsive. You know, we could have one call or we could have five. And as we look around the state of what communities are doing and how they rely upon their neighbors for additional resources, we never want to lose sight of the importance of providing training and equipment to the emergency medical responders, the first responders at volunteer fire department level, who it's critical that they have the training and the equipment to be able to provide service as they wait on an ambulance to arrive. They're closest to the community and they're quickest to respond in the event that we're waiting on an ambulance to respond from another part of the county or from another jurisdiction. And so as we look at what did we plan for here in Fulton County, that's a critical element that we'll look at as well. Community expectations. While we look at what the data says, we look at what is financially feasible, we listen to and look at what does the community expect? What level of service? With the understanding of EMS service is not free. And it is expensive. And their expectations equal ours. And what is available and what are they willing to pay for the county to have that level of service? You as elected officials have to balance that and what's reasonable. I would anticipate that your existing provider, Luther, we moved to RFP and published specifications. They're going to respond to that, as will other providers as they look at your community to determine their level of interest in providing EMS service. They could potentially respond. So we want to make sure that we have all the i's dotted, all the t's crossed, all the specifications that the community expects for a vendor to respond to, for then us as a team to evaluate, to make an informed decision. Commissioners' contract, you can find it because it's a team effort in the interest of public safety EMS. What I will tell you is that EMS is not plentiful. You know, there's few ambulances, few paramedics, few EMTs. We see where the state reported that we had fewer this year than we had last year. And there's a lot of variables for that. So there's competition in trying to find paramedics, buy EMTs. And there's a delay in receiving ambulances that may be bought. And I don't say that as in the vein of the county doing that and having a county EMS service. I'm saying that for the private sector who may want to provide service here. And so doing the due diligence now and being prepared for what will come at the termination of the contract is where we're at. And we have plenty of time to do that. We anticipate that with the reported recommendations coming out, that'll be due in October, which will give us plenty of time going into the first of the year for you to make informed decisions as to what the next step would be for EMS. With that, I'll pause and answer any questions that you may have about where we're at or where we anticipate going.
Barry, you said at the beginning of your presentation that you had met with and presented various organizations and had public meetings, as it were. Have you noticed if there's been a good turnout of the public to attend these meetings other than elected officials or someone that has teeth in the game?
Yes.
There have been?
I've been impressed.
Good.
You know, the first community meeting we had at the Fairgrounds, we ran out of chairs.
Good.
I ran out of handouts. And I told Gail at that meeting that I was impressed with the level of interest from community members, residents, EMS service, hospital, elected officials, interested citizens. You know, I think we had on the front row a couple of gentlemen who came just to be informed because they had heard the meeting was going to be announced.
Good.
I'm hopeful that as we do these other community meetings, we'll have the same.
I just was kind of wondering, as far as how many counties are managed privately versus by the government?
That I cannot tell you, not as I stand here today. What I can tell you that during a few months, I can tell you that information because we're doing a much larger study for the state of Indiana that relates to EMS, but I don't have that today.
But would you say there's quite a few that privately are served?
Yes. There are more. In my guess, I mean, here, there are more EMS service locations provided by private than by what we traditionally know as county EMS.
Other questions or comments, board members for Barry? Anyone in the audience, questions, comments for Barry? Thank you much.
Thank you very much. I'll be back next week for a community meeting.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you much. Okay, next on the agenda, Megan Malott with the Soil and Water Conservation District.
I guess I'll talk first, excuse me, get ready.
Do you want to introduce yourself to everybody?
Yeah, I'm Mike Norman. I've been on the Soil and Water Board for 32 years. I'm the oldest, not the oldest member, but been around for a while. Megan, on the other hand, is the youngest and she's the executive director. She's full of energy, she's full of enthusiasm, she's full of encouragement. And we want to help her all we can. She's got big ideas, but we need to, it seems, well, I've been around 32 years. One thing we need to do better as a board is communicate. I mean, I'm a farmer, I go home to farm. I don't bother you guys a lot. And you guys send me tax bills, but anyway. So, but anyway, she wants to do a lot more without reach, which I applaud. So anyway, I think you'll enjoy her enthusiasm and everything.
Thanks, Mike. Welcome, Megan.
I don't expect you guys to read these right away. This is just for your information to look at whenever you have time. So like Phil said, I am Megan, executive director of Fulton County Soil and Water. And I don't want to take very much of your time, so I'll tell you who Soil and Water is and what we do. So Fulton County Soil and Water Conservation District works within and throughout the county to provide clean water, healthy soils, and keep the soil in place because that matters. And we do this by implementing conservation practices within the community. Cover crops, buffer strips, I'm sure you guys are aware of that. Okay. How Soil and Water Conservation District benefits Fulton County? We bring money into the county. We have a CREP program, which is Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program. And since 2011, we have done in a typical new watershed, over $2 million worth of conservation, getting conservation on the ground. So that's one way. We also, I applied for a $73,000 grant last year through Clean Water Indiana. And that is to put $60,000 back into local residents here that are farmers for cover crops over the next three years. And I'm doing a $10,000 pollinator habitat to help the pollinators because those are important to us. And I have $3,000 for education out of that grant. So we bring money into the county through partnerships and organizations. We communicate and provide technical assistance. I get a lot of phone calls. I don't know if you guys have it on your property. Bush honey stuffle is an issue, especially with a lot of the local landowners. They're wanting to know how to get rid of it, how to cut it out, what to treat it, when to treat it. We can answer those questions. I just had the county commissioners reach out to me. Last week, there was a guy that said, I have an invasive species in the pond at Bruce Lake and we're trying to figure out how to kill it without killing the natives. So that's another issue that I've helped work with. So we do technical assistance, education, conservation programs, and workshops getting ready to have. I don't know if you guys know, Ray Archuleta will be coming next August. He's a soil guy, being a soil guy. Our request, we don't, we're not asking for money or anything. We're just asking for your guys' blessing for us to be able to apply for another CWI grant, September 8th. And so that's why we are here. Do you guys have any questions for me?
What is the acronym you just brought off?
See, Clean Water Indiana. So it's the same grant, the $73,000 grant that I've applied for. It's CWI is Clean Water Indiana. So Mike and I actually, in February, we went to the State House and spoke to Jack Jordan, Bob Cherry, and Stacy Donato, our representatives at a state level. And we were able to secure an additional, so right now, the budgeted line is $1 million for the Clean Water Indiana. We were able to up that to 5 million, an additional 5 million for a total of $6 million for this year. So we have $6 million to use up this year and $6 million to use up next year for it. So we were able to talk to our state representatives and be able to up that. And then it gets delegated to the Soil Board, the state Soil Board, to disperse through local Soil and Water districts to be able to, for us to apply for like grants, cover crops, and stuff like that. My request is going to be for staffing because we are understaffed where we're at. And we're not the only office that's understaffed. There's others around us that are as well, but that was one of the issues. There's 96 counties within Indiana and 36 of us are one-person districts. That means we're doing the technical assistance, the communication, the education, the partnerships, and the administration by ourselves. So if we can get our district better staffed, we can do those five rules better. I can do them all because I am right now, but I can't do one well. So if we can get more people onboard, more staffing underneath of us to do technical assistance or education or the administration part, then that will help us succeed better as a district and be able to serve our community better.
So you're seeking our blessing to apply for a portion of that grant?
Yes.
Of the 6 million or 5 million?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Barry or members?
Staffing, how long, how far out?
Clean Water Indiana is a three-year grant, so they're only good for three years.
What does this grant cover as far as your staff? Because the last time we did a grant, then we found out we had paper benefits above a grant that was received. And so...
Soil and Water will be providing all of that. So with the 6 million, we also were allocated an additional 20,000 per year. So that 20,000 that we were allocated would go towards that.
Other questions, board members?
Yeah, do you work out of the SDE office out here? Or are you a county employee or?
I am a county employee and my office is in front of your hall.
Okay, after I've gone, okay.
Anything else, board members, any other questions? Comments? Any questions or comments for Megan, for anyone in the audience? If not, is there a motion to give a blessing for her to apply for this grant?
I surrender.
Randy made the motion. Do you second it? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. You have a blessing.
Thank you.
Thank you much. We appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, department updates. Pinky, you're front and center. Come on down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So the first thing I want to do is ask permission again for one of my scholarly ideas. So I have partnered with the DLGF, which is the Department of Local Government Finance, and Steve McKenny. And he is going to come down on Tuesday, August 1st and do a free abatement class. So I'm asking permission to hold that class here. It would be from 9:00 a.m. to noon. It would give three hours of continuing education to anyone who needed it. It would be by invitation only. And we would have limited seating. I do have a list and you are all on it, as well as our commissioners, city council, potential city employees for next year, various attorneys, things like that. I've also spoke with Fedco, they will be invited as well. So I'm asking a blessing if we could offer that class here on that day if possible.
The day again?
I'm sorry. It's Tuesday, August 1st.
From 9:00 to noon?
From 9:00 to noon. And it's, the ends of...
The end of the payment is going to be in here?
It would be in this office, yes.
Okay. So are we giving her a blessing? Who, who? Pete, Pete? Lee, Pete blessed. Ron blessed. All in favor, you're blessed.
Thank you. The second half of that, I'm going to ask that I can close my office for that three-hour period. I did have somebody come forward, it was actually Jerry Good, and she offered to answer my phones if need be. I don't really want to put her through that. But if we could close our offices, basically, all my girls need that training. The only other time that they can receive that training is if they go to a conference. It's going to cost the county money. This is three hours that's going to save mileage, stipends, potential hotel stay if they go to a conference and a minimum $300 fee. So I'm asking for that three-hour window in advance. That way I can post a notice. The only ones that would really affect is the title companies. I will make sure they know in ample time so they have that three-hour window to kind of know we're not going to be there and make a wasted trip.
So you will give plenty of notice that the office is going to be closed, those three hours. Again, questions? Well, I think you are gotten blessings from the commissioners.
They've given me approval for all that and they knew I was going to come by as well.
So Steve just wants us to reiterate. So are we all good with her closing her office, August 1st, 9:00 to noon, for the gals to attend the sub- abatement class? Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And thank you for inviting us because I hope everybody can attend. This would be very beneficial because we deal with abatements as a council a lot. So I hope we can all attend.
I hope so as well. I just wanted to let you know, my Ad Valorem Solutions field rep, Pam Martin, was issued a county badge for the safety of the public, as that sounds weird. I get a lot of phone calls with people questioning her very flimsy unofficial paper badge that had her name and nothing else on it. So in this day and age, I wanted her to have something that tied her more directly to us. She is listed as a field rep, as a service for our county. It does have my information in the county's fund number on the back. So it is helping her some, but the commissioners gave approval for that. My mobile office, I feel, although it was my first year, it doesn't sound great, but I feel it went well. I have four people in Akron, five in Grass Creek, 18 in Rochester. I did a total of 27 parcels, which equals 16 overall people. I physically helped in that and some of them were phone calls.
Say the numbers again. Four in Akron.
I did, let me rephrase this. I have four parcels of information I did in Akron, five in Grass Creek, and 18 in Rochester. So 27 parcels total, 16 people attended across the board with those, and three phone calls for my office when I was here in Rochester.
Okay.
So next year, I think I'm going to throw myself in on some Saturday mornings. I'm going to hit the Niana Lake Conservancy Club if they allow me there. I will do more of a request than anything, the Kiwanua Library. If I do them on a Saturday, it gives me a little more leeway. If I do them after work during the week at a library, I'm limited to 5 o'clock. So it's not much of a after hours. So I will look at doing things a little different going forward. But I was happily surprised I had 27 parcels in those three days. But I'll try it one more year and then I'll probably cut the cord on it if it doesn't do any better.
Okay.
And then the last thing I wanted to do is tell you there was a few Senate-enrolled acts that will affect what overall will be taken in in the county. It won't take effect until January 1st of 2024, so it would be the 2024 assessment, 2025 taxpayer year. What they've done is the Senate Enrollment Act, they're cleaning up the language of what a homestead is. And they're going to take more buildings than just a house and attached garage and move them into a CAP 1, which those buildings typically... which those buildings typically that are extra fall into a cap three. So that means that only one percent, no more than one percent can be taxed on a house, a detached garage, now an extra building, which can be a pole barn. And they've expanded the language of what a homestead site is, which is not the direct acreage in front of it. So that's going to be a big deal. The second part of that that's kind of important is any excess residential structure will no longer, after it is done in the homestead, anything that expands that won't be capped at a three percent anymore. The state of Indiana has moved it to a two percent. So that's going to cut down the amount of revenue that can be captured by the states. They further have decided, and I went, the reason I'm bringing this up is because Friday I drove to Indiana and sat through a roundtable on the changes that are going to affect our taxes going forward. The second big thing is apartments, anything over five units. Unfortunately, it's ugly for me, but I have to be able to provide all three cost manners. The cost table, the sales comparison and the income approaches. I have to be able to apply all three to that building and I have to now by law give them the lowest of the three without them ever committing. And it's the same for big box stores.
And this is for twenty-four pay twenty-five?
This is for twenty-four pay twenty-five. So that means Walmart will no longer be at their tax rate. I have to give them the lowest bylaw that I can allot. And that's the same for Doc Hopps apartment complex that is across from the golf place. So it's nothing I can control. It's what the state's starting to mandate. And my new favorite, if you appeal, they felt that the language for the Indiana appeal process was bullying the public and they felt that by saying that there is the option that if you appeal your taxes, it can go up because of items we miss, that language is now being removed. I can only either leave it as it is for their assessed value or they encourage us to drop it. So without going deeper.
The D L G F?
The D L G F. And that is actually part of a House Enrollment Act, four twenty-five. So they're trying to really stick the screws to us across the state of Indiana. But I wanted to let you know this is coming. They will clean up the language before the end of the year and at the end of the year they'll release it. So, but this is where it's going.
Boy, some lobbyists got paid big bucks, didn't they?
I don't know what happened, but somebody left happy. It was not me.
They've been quite in the big box store thing for a couple of years because we've been talking about it at treasurer's meetings for a couple of years now about big box stores.
Yeah, it was the chef, I don't know, sheperd something big box, the big federal case. And so some of this rolled out because of it, but not the homestead or how they're going to change the caps around. But we are in camera. Our rep is working with us on that and they're writing scripts now and they'll go into place for twenty-four pay twenty-five. So we'll still have to kind of pay attention and make sure because unfortunately the state has also mandated it that if you have eight buildings and they're all considered residential use, I have to pick as your extra building, the most expensive building on your property and make it look straight. So there's that. It's all sorts of stuff happening.
Oh, my.
Yeah, that's, so that's why I wanted to tell you now, so it's not a huge surprise in a few months when they start actually releasing the public script.
This is awful. Okay.
But that's all I have. I'm sorry. Good news and bad news. Good news, there's a free abatement class. Bad news, they're cutting our taxes, our tax base.
And I appreciated you offering the mobile assessment to the taxpayers. That was nice of you to do and I know it took a lot of time and preparation on your part to make that service available to people. I wish more would have taken advantage of it, but thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. And it's new, so I'm hoping more for next year.
Any questions or comments, board members, for Casey? Any questions or comments in the audience for Casey? Thank you much. Gail? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I only have a couple of things. You guys got my reports last week.
We did. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Senate Bill one fifty-eight.
You have more bad news.
Well, I'm not going to take out a county general and come out of the night and win funds, so you're good.
Okay.
So, but the one thing that we're going to utilize is we need to implement two other disciplines as a- Sorry, my throat's kind of sore here, but the two disciplines that would be implemented will be fire and police. We only currently have E M D through Frederick Church Thatch and International Academies of E M D. When this House bill came out, we needed to implement the other two. And I've sent that to you a couple of times. So with that being said, instead of having a hodgepodge in our CAD system, currently Spillman incorporates this program as well. So they, it was double a couple of weeks ago, the price. They had things in there that was not necessary and it is half the price. And I know it's extravagant when you see the seventy-six thousand. I will say the state pays for all training. So these programs are approved by the State of Indiana and they do pay for this training. So that amount comes out of that quote as well. So we will be responsible minus the training portion of it. So that was feasible for me, so we'll probably move on with your blessings and I'll send the appropriation and sign the quote because the commissioners, I believe they gave them their blessing yesterday. Can't recall. It was a big day yesterday, so.
And you have the fund for this?
Yes, it'll come out in nine-one points.
Okay.
And I, you know, sent the quotes to-
Right, yes.
Now we need to, we probably need to move on that and we can move that through the United Ward Board as well or send that out and let them know what we're doing. And we do meet with Dr. Van next week to go over some E M D protocols. More and more of our cases are being called to court and are being requested from the public. So everybody knows, yes, they are available, but they are not available if they're in a case. So they usually run those through the prosecutor's office before those are released, when I get to their case. So anyway, with that being said, we just, the Senate bills come out with some things that happen on a public safety level and classifying telecommunicators as professionals. There is a level of training that has to be done.
So when does that have to be met or when does that-
By December thirty-first of this year.
This year, okay.
So some of our folks already have the forty-hour pre-basis, some do not. We'll get those in increments. We can do that online. It is kind of like scattered here and there when we do those online. But the forty-hour, we can get that through any kind of program. We don't have to necessarily go through Priority Dispatch. But our procurator quality assurance in our program will come from this company here.
Okay.
They're rated, I will tell you, the expense is because they're rated the best.
That's good. So you need our blessing to move forward with this funding?
Yes, and I'll send that to all my board members as well after this blessing because we only get on order.
Okay. So is there a motion? So Ron moved to bless.
I'll second.
Laurie seconded, all in favor, signify, raising your right hand. And Pete abstains. Motion carries five-zero.
The other thing is on the monetary side, the E M P G grant is almost completed. I'm on the last cycle and that gives up to eighteen thousand back to the county with the job forms that we do out of the E M A. But the maximum is eighteen thousand from I D A G S.
Okay.
So that will be completed by next week and so they'll grant that probably in September, ideally.
Okay.
And if you guys don't have anything else on the reports I gave, it's important, those dates that I gave you on the email, please feel free to come to any of those meetings as we explain what E M A is and for your community plan here for Holden County minus community outreach. We have an overwhelming response from community outreach. They are using our resources and Craig is being called out more and more. So with that being said, they know what assets we have and they're learning more about what the importance of E M A is. So on July sixth, I will tell you, your Homeland Security will be here and they're going to give their point of view on the cleanup and what it took to clean up that mess in southern Indiana or central Indiana on those tornadoes. The expense is what they see on the trials contribute. So if you want to come up with some questions or have anything for them or you can't be there, by all means, send some questions and we'll have Dustin send them back.
And the July sixth meeting, I know that Craig said, remind me of the time. Is that the detention center? Remind me of the time.
It's from ten to one.
Thank you.
And lunch will be provided, so if we-
And I think he was an R S V P.
Probably.
Okay.
I gave him that task.
Okay.
Because we're trying to find a sponsor and Farm Bureau has been very good about sponsoring a lot of our L A P C and so forth, but we're trying to get another sponsor. If not, we will call it and say, can we use L A P C plus?
Okay.
We can do that. Okay?
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments for Gail, board? Questions or comments for Gail from the audience? Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Sheriff Heischman?
I'm on down. All right. So I emailed out the reports last evening.
We got them.
Any questions on anything with it, pretty standard stuff on the questions report and the monthly report? Automatic vehicle locators, you guys blessed that a couple of meetings ago. We've been interacting a lot with that, getting that set up. I'm hoping, working with Josh and Spillman, I'm hoping the next couple of weeks we get that fully implemented and ran out. We had fifty-eight inmates in custody or incarcerated yesterday afternoon. I didn't look today. We did sign the contract with the Marshal Service to hospital inmates last week. They contracted an amount of seventy-five dollars per day per inmate and then thirty-five dollars an hour per transport officer per hour. So the seventy-five dollars is forty dollars more we're getting from counties, Holden County inmates. And the thirty-five dollars an hour is figuring transportation costs for if we had to be, if the jail staff had to be on overtime.
You said thirty-five, so you said two different things, thirty-five dollars per transport and then an hour?
Per officer, per hour. That requires two officers.
Wow.
So it'd be seventy dollars an hour that they're going to pay, that reimbursed accounted for transports.
Okay. Wow, okay.
We had to get some training completed for the jail staff. The jail staff has to be armed and they haven't been thus far, so we had to get some firearms training and get some ballistic vest order, things like that to get compliant with the U S M S. But everything should be rock and roll on that. So we've contracted for thirty-six months, up to fifty beds. And then we've got a thirty-day opt-out. If either one of us likes what's going on, we can opt out for thirty days. Any questions on that?
Do they have to be kept as two question, in a separate part of the, okay.
Okay.
Will that make you short-staffed?
No, we, I mean, the jail's adequately staffed now. I mean, I don't foresee a whole lot of transports talking to the Marshal Services. They don't have a whole lot of transport. They don't, they say they don't have a whole lot of transports coming out. In the event that we would end up with fifty, fifty federal inmates, I mean, yeah, I may have to come back to you. I may have to talk. But we're getting seventy-five dollars a day per inmate, so you know, it's worth, it's worth keeping that in place. You know, we got to come back to a couple of transport officers or something else, but initially I don't foresee that being an issue at all, so.
Another question. I'll be free. Steve? So would these, would this additional inmates have any bearing on the contract that you have to feed these people?
We're going to-
I forget what that's called.
Yeah, I mean, it's a food service contract.
Okay.
We pay per meal, so we would pay an addition, we would pay two dollars, I think it's two dollars and fifty-six cents per meal.
Okay.
So it would cost us an additional seven dollars a day.
Okay.
Per inmate, so. And then that would fall under our medical contract too, anything inside the facility. And that's going to fall under the blanket of our contract now. Then anything, if they would have to be shipped out or anything, the Marshal Services, the federal government pays for all that, so.
Oh, wow, okay.
Talking to other sheriffs and other facilities around the state, this is a win-win for county governments. It's, you know, it's here, the beds are available, the staffing is there and it's just a way to generate revenue to pay down this bond, so. I don't see that it's, you know, we can move on, so.
I agree.
It's all good to go now?
It's all good to go, yeah. We're waiting on them to send it back with their signatures up their chain, so, yeah. But, you know, it should be good to go. Yes, sir.
This was underneath the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it's eighty and ten or eighty.
I thought seventy, fifteen and fifty.
And it may be, yeah, whatever the ordinance is.
That falls underneath this order.
Yeah, that's what we talked about with the commissioners, it would just follow the same ordinance. As the money gets generated revenue and it's, it would go under that, under that. I think that was under specifically for other county inmates.
That's pretty nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
Any other questions on that? All right. J-CAP, I sent you guys out an email last week on J-CAP Jail Chemical Addiction Program. This is basically a program that we've been working on behind the scenes since the first of the year when I came into office. Cosgasko County is who we really followed, kind of followed up with on this program last year. It's been successful in several counties around the state. Each county kind of fine-tunes it specifically for what their county's needs are, as well as what they have for community resources. But I'm working behind the scenes. We're going to fire it up in July. I think July tenth is the start of it. Basically, we designated a cell block or a pod in the detention center that inmates are going to be housed in. They're going to be working through recovery program as well as developing life skills and mentorships. They're going to have the recovery aspect of it on top of learning bank financing or learning parenting classes or anger management or CPR. It's completely scheduled out. They're going to be busy most hours of the day. And it's a twelve-week program, so we're looking at graduation October-ish. I know that there was a couple of different dates that came out, but it'll be in October, so I'll certainly keep you guys posted of that. Funding thus far has been through, has been through donations, not even really donations, just volunteer work. I did get a grant for three thousand dollars for the program. I've had several community members and businesses reach out saying, what can we do to help? How can we donate? So I really foresee this being a successful program and not going to be any issues as far as funding. Been working with the auditor's office, trying to get a cap set up to where we can have it all tracked through. Money's coming in, money's going out for the J-CAP program, but it's not going to cost taxpayers anything. It's going to be fully funded by volunteers and donations and grants, so. We had service provider training last week at the sheriff's office, basically just letting all the volunteers know what they can and can't do inside the facility, which can and can't bring in, what to expect, things like that, so. And we've probably got twenty-five members, so we've probably got another twenty-five volunteers we've got to do. But I mean, that's, I really foresee that being a good program, so.
So do inmates have to meet any certain criteria to be invited for this program?
There's going to be an application process and it's going to be selected by, I mean, there's going to be a committee put together to tell you exactly who that is right now. I can't, I mean, jail commander's going to be involved in it. I know probation's going to be involved in it. You know, if the defense attorneys have people that they think, the big thing right now is their desire to want the program. There's no incentives for them as far as a sentence modification or time off or anything else. It's, they've got to want the change, so. So with that, I think, you know, people that know these inmates, that deal with them on daily, on the daily, I think know who's ready for that and who's not ready for that. So then obviously we want to keep them ready the twelve weeks for the program. I'm sure some things are going to happen where, you know, somebody may modify out or something like that, where they're not going to complete it, but we certainly don't want to start a program and have it, you know, people fall out as the program goes on, so.
Sounds like a great program to me.
We're hoping.
Sounds good.
That's all I've got.
Any other questions or comments, board members, for Travis? Audience, anything for Travis? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy, anything other than, okay. John?
Evening.
Good evening.
I'll play by tonight.
Good. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Nice warm evening. Um, I don't have a whole lot for you tonight. Um, bringing you up to date, the guys are patching holes, changing culverts. They are operating a brush cutter. Um, I think the last time I told you the brush cutter was on its way. It did get delivered. Uh, they've got it into operation. They're cutting brush with it. So, um, it's a nice unit. Uh, they really like it. The nice thing about this one is it's got a mulching head on it. So when they cut the brush and like the last one that just chopped it and left it laid, this one will grind it up into little pieces of mulch. It leaves things in pretty nice condition when they leave. So we haven't been getting any complaints or anything. So it's doing a nice job. Um, the guys are mowing road sites. Um, they've completed one round around the county and they've started a second. So, um, they're mowing. Um, bringing you up to date on the federal aid bridges, uh, bridge 32, it's been completed and it's been opened. Uh, that was open there later last month. And bridge 50, it was supposed to start right after, that's the one on hole 31 over the Tepucan River. That was supposed to start right after bridge 32 was open. It's been delayed. AT&amp;T had a fiber line attached to that bridge, which they didn't realize they had on it supposedly, even though they had a year and a half to find it. But at the last minute, they realized they had it and they are rerouting that. They poured it under the river. Um, they have a hard date of the 30th to reroute that. And then once that's rerouted, the port construction will start their work on the bridge. So it sounds like the first of July, the bridge will be closed and construction will start on the bridge. So. It sounds like around July 1st, the bridge will be closed. It's going to be about 70, 75 days on that. So, um, we can expect that. Um, the only other thing I have for you tonight, uh, you'll see in appropriation for, uh, the power bring that I talked to you earlier on in the year about, uh, that we ordered. It's going to be coming soon. Um, and that's for $70,000 or $70,200 will be coming through tonight. And that's basically all I've got for you. Unless you have anything else for me.
Board members, questions or comments for John?
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
I saw in your update here, you have appropriations to move money. I'm, excuse me, is it, I'm saying this right? Several hundred thousand dollars?
From King Bridge to MVH and back and.
So if you would, explain it to me like I'm five years old. What is that about?
Well, I probably needed to explain it to me too. But, so, back when we filled out the budget from last year, MVH and King Bridge, so there's two bridges, there's 32 and 50. They should have been funded out of King Bridge. They were funded out of 1176.
Okay.
Instead, they should have been funded out of, uh, King Bridge. So what I'm trying to do is reappropriate those funds, move them back over to King Bridge, and then move that money back to 1176, basically. So we've got more money than 1176 and to work with. And then do an appropriation of 1176 to fund our community crossings and some of our chip and seal program.
So you can't chip and seal until this gets done?
We can't get our chip and seal or fund our community crossings until we get that done.
Okay.
So I've made two attempts on that and we haven't got the paperwork properly done.
Yeah, I saw another email here from Christine that the amounts are wrong or something. So what do we need to do to get this? It sounds to me like you can't do any road maintenance until this is corrected.
Correct.
So what do we need to do to correct this?
Are you, if you're looking at me, I don't know.
I'm asking whatever we need to do to fix this. I mean, what is, what is the problem? Why we can't get John his money to work on the road?
Comment?
John and I discussed it. He's just coming up short in MVH. So he has a couple of options at his feet that he just needs to decide which way to go.
Have you decided which way you want to go?
Yeah, I thought we had it. You know, I guess we had the paperwork done wrong. Is that right?
Well, it depends on, it's like he took half of each option. So it depended on which way he wanted to go.
So we need to sit down and get the paperwork done correctly.
It would appear that way.
So the money was wrong? The amounts were wrong? Or, I'm confused.
It depended on the way he wanted to go about it.
Okay. So in the meantime, no road repairs are going to get done until this is fixed?
I have no idea. John decided to pull the appropriations last night when, I mean, we could have done the appropriations that were presented last night and made up the difference in next month, which I'm sure you read in the email. But he pulled the appropriations last night from the commissioners. So they didn't have an opportunity to approve them last night, which is why you don't have them in front of you tonight.
Seems pointless, but, okay. Seems like we're having a big delay in getting stuff done over paperwork. It should have been, if there was a problem, I guess I don't understand why it wasn't corrected or called or notified to have done.
It was notified as soon as I got the email with the additional appropriations on there.
So this is easily corrected? Yes?
I, I think so.
Yes? John, easily corrected?
That's what she said.
Okay.
We'll try again.
Well, I don't know. Just in the meantime, you can burn a nice weather to be doing road work, but we can't because of a clerical issue. That just seems silly. Like we should be better than that.
Well, will it get this fixed? In, in, within the week? How's that?
That's kind of what it is. Yeah. I mean, John needs to get, he needs his money to, that he has. He needs his money moved so that he can get road repairs underway. And it's just the season for it.
Understood.
So you don't have the money for oil? Is that what's, or you already got your stone?
I think we need the oil and then also money for the community crossings to match.
That could be a huge problem.
A huge problem. And if we don't get it, then.
Well, yeah, we lose the, we lose the funding from the feds. We lose the projects. Right?
Yeah, you guys signed the contract for it. So you guys.
Yeah. So the county's on a hook for the federal money that we're counting on. Yeah. Sounds like we need to get this corrected like yesterday.
It'll get corrected.
I hope so.
Yes. Anything else for John?
Community crossings, that's 450 north, 700 north. When you're going to take care of it.
Yep. Anything else for John? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Josh? Good evening.
Good evening.
And you, and you handed out information to everyone?
Yes. Everybody should have their work.
Is it a handout?
Yes.
Okay.
And everybody's handout should be in order with mine. So let's go ahead and start with page two. So last night I went to the commissioners and asked the commissioners if I could move forward with presenting to you an infrastructure, infrastructure upgrade that we knew was coming years back. Um, that upgrade is necessary due to the fact that the hardware that we currently have for storage and compute resources is going to the live here in the next year. Um, you'll see as we go on, I'll, I'll show you some information that substantiates that. We'll just go ahead and get to the brunt of the cost right off the bat. Uh, commissioners last night wanted me to talk with the group again this morning. We had a conference call. Um, I talked with them a little bit about the fact that, uh, IT savvy is our bar. Uh, they're locked in with Dell as far as pricing is concerned. Wanted to see them do a little bit better if they could, uh, especially bearing the fact that the price was already considerably lower than what it would have been had I gone direct through Dell and configured everything on my own through their website. Um, and I'll get to that as well. So the cost, the final cost for this project, and we can go into technical detail if you'd like. Uh, this is basically all of our compute resources, uh, for our virtual servers throughout the county and our storage. Um, it all goes end of life, uh, at the, uh, date of February 2024. We cannot renew. That was February 2023. Unfortunately, this is not like a regular system where we can sit there and just swap upgrades into it. It doesn't work that way. If we want to add additional storage to the arrays that we have now, uh, we can no longer do that because shelves are no longer available for the product since it is at that point is going to end of life. Uh, my biggest concern is not whether or not the hardware itself is feasible. It's still very feasible and, and usable. It's the actual operating environment. And with cybersecurity issues looming like they have been over the last X amount of years and only growing more concerns as time goes on, uh, if the operating environment isn't supported any longer, uh, we have some type of mishap that happens, we're in harm's way. And we've got to keep that operating, operating environment itself up and running and current. They will no longer support that at the end of life. So do they know they have yet? Yeah, they do know they have, unfortunately. Uh, so the total cost for this project is $916,844.8. It's a turnkey solution that supports moving to a new system, unlike our traditional systems that we've used over the years, which is, uh, a sand infrastructure. Uh, this is a DX rail system. They have what they call compute nodes. There'll be five compute nodes at this location and five compute nodes over at the detention center. Uh, those work in conjunction with one another. Should we have any type of failure here? Um, it's very similar to what we've done in the past. It's just different types of hardware. Uh, it will take over at the detention center and they're both identical systems. So throughout the day, every so many seconds, the transactional data is being moved across from one end to the other. So each end is current. What we may do, uh, looking at our data at rest, our backups, uh, with the old infrastructure, doing some investigating this morning, going into a little more detail with Dell, with the current systems, being the fact that our data at rest especially, we can put into an encrypted environment, uh, that would protect the data resting. So that would give us the ability to take those units and put those in a situation where they act as backup storage. That would give us a little bit more backup storage. But from an active standpoint, it's not the route we could take, unfortunately. So we've got the brunt of that cost there. Last night when I presented to the commissioners, uh, we had a total of $933,258.35. So roughly, it's not a huge amount, especially considering the cost of the project. It's another $16,444 and some odd change. Price difference.
Which ends up being the total of, what'd you say?
The total is on the very first page on the backside, or excuse me, second page on the backside, $916,844.8.
Thank you.
And that's $16,444 and some odd change less than the original. Now, this is also including, including the very first quote that you looked at. This is also including not only the hardware itself for both locations, it's including all the licensing that we need as well. Uh, it's including the licensing for our current virtual server environment. We had to purchase additional licensing for that. That'll carry over with the current licensing we have. So it will end all at the same time. We know that's a perpetual machine. It constantly comes up every X amount of years. We purchased X amount of years in advance to lock in the cross. Uh, but that brings the current licensing that we have now with the new licensing needed for this system and it ends at the same date. So that's the VMware VSphere that you see for three years. That's additional. That coincides with what we currently have. That's added on top of what we currently have. And then we have VMware Verizon. And what that is, is years back, back in 2011, I believe, maybe it was 12. Um, I don't remember where it was, 11 or 12, we virtualized. I think it was 11. I think 2011, we virtualized our server environment and it worked out fantastic, of course. It gave us, uh, more flexibility. It gives us the ability when a vendor comes in and they said, or when they say to us, hey, we want these specs. We want to sell you the hardware. And usually that hardware, and I'm not knocking vendors, but when they come in and want to sell you one server at $35,000 and you're only going to use 5% of the resources in that server. This gives us the ability on the fly within about 15, 20 minute timeframe to have a VM up and running for them to meet their specs. We haven't had one vendor that's came here yet that has asked for certain specs and we couldn't meet those needs. Um, the current system that we have now, there's 25 terabytes of storage at each location. This new system here will have 56.9 terabytes of usable ster, storage. So we have twice the amount of storage that we have currently. This will give us room to expand. The current system that we have now gave us about seven years of use before it went into life. This system should give us much more than that. I'm talking with Dell. I told them, you know, unfortunately I understand the scenario. We've been down this road twice. This is our third act, so to speak, with Dell EMC. We've been very pleased with the systems, very pleased with the support that we get from them. Most of the, the product itself is service, serviceable by Devin and myself. But there are certain items there that when they go bad, they do not allow you yourself to replace it. They have to have a tech onsite to verify it's working due to the cost of some of these parts. But it's more storage, more compute resources. And the way this system works, unlike now, we have two servers here locally and a storage array. We have five servers. They all have storage in each of those servers. They're considered what they call nodes. Those nodes down the road, should we need to add to it for more storage or compute, it's literally just adding a new node. And depending on the timeframe, it typically does not matter whatsoever what the timeframe is. You can add that node in. It'll marry right in. So we should get 10 plus years out of this system. It'll probably be a system that for myself, I probably won't be in front of you next time around to ask for something like this. And when I say ask, I'm asking for your blessing. I'm not asking for money for this project. This money's already been budgeted. So if we turn then to the Dell Technologies page, it's called for your consideration. This would be if I would have gone on to the premier page and done the configuration myself. Um, the total cost just for the server itself through Dell, the two servers, would be $956,572.70. And that roughly comes out to a difference with working with IT savvy and Dell direct through the reseller and through Dell, through their team. Um, the savings came out to about $243,008, or $243,084.9. So it's a substantial savings. Then of course you have the licensing on top of that. But if you look, you've got just on the first page that I sent to you, $713,564 compared to that $956 that I just quoted off. So there was a substantial savings. We worked with them for months to get the price down and we even kind of squeezed some more out of them this morning. So. For proof, as far as if should any of you get asked about this and why we're spending this type of money on this, if you go to, you'll see after we get past that premier page with the pricing for the $956,000. If you go to the next page, you'll see some highlighted dates there. That's the end of renewal, which shows the February 3rd of 2023 for our, uh, 300 hybrid system that we have. And then we have the two identical systems at each location for the 450 all flash. And those are, uh, end of renewal at February 2023 also. And then end of service life for those units are February 2024. So here we are now in June, in our approach July, by the end of the year and just shortly thereafter, we'll be done with those units as far as operability with the operating environment itself. And then you have one more notice on the back that's talking about the actual software itself. And you can see it's effective June 30th, 2023. So the question is going to be funded. Um, years back, we knew, like I mentioned, that we were going to approach this mark and we'd have to move on it. I didn't want anybody to be caught up with their, uh, hands tied behind their backs. It's a lot of money. We knew it was going to be a lot of money. For the five-year bill bond, we have for the very last page, it's highlighted, we have storage area network for $450,760. We have the DX rail virtual hyper-converged infrastructure for $350,000. And then we have the VMware licensing at $85,000. Then in 2023, if you look at the, uh, storage, you can see the $100,000 over in King Cap. Now, I've spent a little over $30,000 of that. So there's about $69,000 current in, in that light item. But the total bond highlighted is $892,760, the King Cap. Like I said, I had $100,000 and I found that we'd spent. Like I said, I had $100,000, then I found that we'd spent about $31,000 of that. So, workable right now, we're right around $960. And even at the $960, our total cost comes in underneath that. Now, the other thing I'll say with this, the other added benefit that we get with this new system is, along with the virtual servers, the VMware Horizon licensing comes with that, and that'll allow us to virtualize our desktops as well. What that will do is that'll allow us now to, instead of looking at a rotating schedule that we have between the five, sometimes less than that, let's say, three, five, seven years with this desktop units that we have throughout the county, depending on what department, even some are higher-end users, this new system will support that with the resolutions that they need. And that gives us the ability to take away those compute resources from the physical hardware on their desks themselves and put it on this DX rail system itself. So, that gives us longevity with the physical piece of hardware as well. So, if we get to a point where we start to see that the actual piece of hardware sitting on the desk is aging, the resources are getting gobbled up, there's not enough memory, there's not enough compute power to it, we can sit there and adjust out on the fly on the DX rail system, and basically, they're relying on the network to sit there and get their compute resources directly off the server. So, it basically takes our desktops into the same realm as what we did years back with our server equipment. So, I am looking for your blessing to move forward with this purchase with the bond money. I do want to verify with Christina that the bond money is there and it's usable. But if your permission allows for it, I'd like to move forward.
Did you read this straight off of the mid?
The very first page there. If you look at the very first page, you can see a letter from Dell Direct from their Midwest Sales Manager.
You mentioned tech savvy to be involved, will they have to be involved with the installation room? We'll have a bill on that later too?
No, this is a turnkey solution, everything's built into this. So, three things. One, with this DX rail system, Dell, when we talked with Dell, we were expecting to set this up ourselves on our end, being the type of system that it is. They want to send it out with their techs, they will install it onsite. After that, they hand us the keys like a car and they say it's all yours. That's fine. We do not have an option on that one, as far as setting it up on our own. The other thing is, this carries five years, excuse me, that's four, five, five years, missing a thumb there, five years of 24/7 onsite support. Should we have any technical issues? And then from a pro-support standpoint, over the phone as well, for any troubleshooting, it's five years as well. So, this is all encapsulated into the purchase. So, there's no gotchas. After we get the unit five years from now, that's the only time that I'll be looking at renewing support services for that. So, hardware's covered, any type of software bugs are covered, we're good in that scenario. We have the network infrastructure, one of the things, as an update, one of the things that we've been doing is we've been upgrading our network switches. Our network switches that we've been waiting on from HP Aruba, they finally arrived about two, almost three months ago now. It was about, almost a two-year process of getting them in. They came in, we've worked on the detention center, the jail, excuse me, the 911 detention center probation. We have in highway, we have the annex here, and then we have the courthouse to finish up with. Then we have those all swapped out. Our network infrastructure will support this environment, and it will support. That's another purchase that we did years back. We're looking at access port speeds, five gigs on every single port that we have. My lifetime, I won't see any need upgrade. So, you should not see us come forward with a major purchase like that again. Also, with those units, we carry a support contract with those. Should one go down, we get a next one the very next day. So, we're covered.
Kudos. Yes, thank you for your hard work on this. Any questions or comments, board members?
I have a question, Josh. I remember several years ago, and I'm not, definitely not very well versed on computer savvy, but we ran into a situation with our heating system where we had proprietary.
Oh, yeah.
Is that still the case, or is that something that you necessarily think of?
No, that would depend on the vendor down the road. I know when we were looking at the detention center, that was one thing that they said they did not want to virtualize. They wanted a physical unit for that. There are special circumstances, so out of the 52, I believe, virtual servers that we have, there may be one or two I'm missing. When we started out here at the county, I think we had a total of maybe 12 servers. We're now at 52. With the HVAC system, I know exactly where it was, a Windows 98 machine. It was a decrepit batch chain. They cannot, they cannot virtualize that. We have one other server from a vendor that we cannot, two, excuse me. We have the recording server for the interview rooms over at the detention center. And then in 911, we have our recording server that records the 911 calls. They cannot be virtualized. We can utilize virtualized storage for those, but as far as the actual resources, we cannot. Compute resources, we cannot. Due to the fact that there's special wiring and added cards that need to happen and just can't take place, so.
Any other questions or comments, board members? If not, is there a motion to give Josh a blessing to move forward with this? Lori?
Yeah, I made a motion to move.
Is there a second? Ron seconded, all in favor, say the five, we raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you much.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Okay, I think that's all department heads. Michael, do you want to speak before we go forward on our agenda?
My pleasure, want me to?
Okay. And so I pass it, so Michael, so I remembered, if you will take one and pass it down.
Tomorrow morning, there's a, at 10 o'clock, there's a housing study meeting. It's going to be a virtual meeting, starting at 10, as I said. And I'm going to take the, this is going to be a milestone because it's going to be a potential, market potential analysis of what kind of housing the county could actually be looking at. It's going to be rough data, don't take it all to heart, but I'm going to send you all a connection to this meeting, so that if you're near a computer at 10 o'clock, you can get on it and actually get some information firsthand and start thinking about it. On the 14th of August, and I don't have a time scheduled for this, it'll be in the evening, I can tell you that much, there'll be a meeting, Housing Symposium. And what this is going to be, it's going to be a public meeting to actually discuss the fund information that you receive tomorrow. So, you get a more detailed picture of what type of housing the county and the cities can take and deal with. If you look, the first, what you've got right here in the first two pages is a breakdown of an earlier meeting that we had, of put together a communications program for getting the information out. We're going to get it out through the newspapers, the radio station, any place that we can do it. But this is just a rough outline of what it's going to be. I just thought I'd share that with you. If you look at the third page, you see the Housing Initiative roadmap. And where that little balloon is, is where we're standing right now. So, we've still got a ways to go, just about another year out there, six, eight months, basically. So, like I said, this link will come sometime between nine and 10 because they're time-sensitive. And I'll forward it to you, so don't, if you hit it close to 10 o'clock and you're looking for it, you don't see it, don't get worried, it'll be there. As soon as they send it to me, I'll send it out. So, that's that. And then I'm just going to do two other things for you tonight. The Blacker Business Park, we had a meeting on the 5th of June, and that will finally be completed at the end of this year. Sometime around September, we think it will be, we pay everything in it. So, that'll be, that'll finally be done. And then the other thing, the last thing that I'll just report for you is, I've been working with Pike lumbar, and Craig is concerned about the condition of Route 14. And so, we, he's asked for some help. I put him in touch with local, with the state officials. He's working with NDOT to see if he can get them to do a little more of what's planned for this summer, is a chip and seal program. What he'd like to see is take it all the way down to Dirk and rebuild the road complete and total, which is the plan for about three years from now, I understand. So, he wants to speed that up, we're working with him, see what we can do. Brought in the Senator and Representative, there's a few other people that we're talking with at this point too. I don't know where, how far that'll go, but that's, couldn't be a major change if it happens. So, that's kind of the stuff. The other stuff that you see on that page is stuff that we've been working with, meetings attended, things like that, you'll start getting that kind of information to, so, in the future, so. That's all I've got.
Any questions or comments from Michael, board members? Thank you much. Okay. Next on our agenda, ordinance authorizing. Okay, authorizing investment of public funds. I'm going to read this once and then have two readings by title only. Kathy, you want to talk about this?
Yeah.
Before I read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize because this has expired, it expired in May. I didn't catch the date, otherwise I brought this to you last month. Basically, what this is, it allows me to invest county funds beyond two years, but not longer than five years. And it has to be updated every fifth year, so that's what this is pertaining to.
So, so I'll read just the front page. Ordinance number 06202023, adoption Fulton County investment policy and ordinance authorizing the investment of public funds in investments lasting more than two years and not more than five years pursuant to IC 5-13-9-5.7. Whereas, it is the policy of Fulton County to invest public funds in a manner which will provide the highest investment return with the maximum security while meeting the daily cash flow demands of the county and conforming to all state and local statutes governing the investments of public funds. And whereas, Indiana Code 5-13-9-5.7A5 authorizes the fiscal body of a political subdivision to adopt an investment policy authorizing the investment of public funds of the political subdivision for more than two years and not more than five years. And whereas, the Indiana Code limits the total investments lasting more than two years and not more than five years to not more than 25% of the total portfolio of public funds invested by the political subdivision, including balances in transaction accounts. And whereas, the Fulton County Board of Finance on June 12th, 2023, adopted a Fulton County investment policy in the form attached here too and made part hereof as Exhibit A, authorizing investments lasting more than two years and not more than five years. Therefore, be it ordained that the County Council of Fulton County, Indiana, hereby adopts the Fulton County investment policy attached here too as Exhibit A and approves the investment of Fulton County public funds by the Fulton County Treasurer in investments lasting more than two years and not more than five years, so long as the total amount of such investments outstanding does not exceed 25% of the total portfolio of public funds invested by Fulton County, including balances in transaction accounts. Be it further ordained that this ordinance and the authority to make investments lasting more than two years and not more than five years shall expire on June 20th, 2027, four years from this date, in accordance with IC 5-13-9-5, probably 0.78 and 6. Any questions or comments, board members?
This is just a renewal of the current policy.
You mentioned, that's all it is, yes.
Yes.
So, so we're going to forego having the last reading by title only next month, so we can get this done for Kathy, if that meets with everyone's approval. So, I will then ask for a motion to have a second and third reading by title only of this ordinance. Steve, make the motion, is there a second? He's seconded, all in favor, say the five, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Second reading by title only, ordinance number 06202023, adoption Fulton County investment policy and ordinance authorizing the investment of public funds in investments lasting more than two years and not more than five years pursuant to IC 5-13-9-5.7. That was the second reading. The third and last reading, ordinance number 06202023, adoption Fulton County investment policy and ordinance authorizing the investment of public funds in investment lasting more than two years and not more than five years pursuant to IC 5-13-9-5.7. Any questions or comments, board members? If not, I will ask for a motion to pass this, approve this ordinance. Motion to approve, Steve moved to approve. Is there a second? Ron seconded, all in favor, say the five, raise your right hand. Carry six zero, do you like move? I did? Sorry. Okay, I'm going to sign and pass. So, if you guys will sign and pass, please, and thank you. The money's safe.
Okay.
Are they laughing at me?
No.
No, come on. I just said the money's safe.
Do what?
I just told her the money's safe now. No, that's right, that's why she's happy.
Well, yeah.
Well, yeah.
That's why that money's out there to be invested right now. Not that there's a whole lot out there. Just a quick update, settlement has been done.
Okay.
All went well, I hope.
Good. Your money, I'm working on, have that in your review there?
Oh, yeah, it is. It's nice to get settlement done and out of the way, so. Just getting ready to work on, I started, when I started working on tax sale, I pulled a list of potential tax sales, properties that are up for tax sale. I decided to try something a little bit different this year, just to see what kind of response I'd get. So, I found an old courtesy letter Lori had done several years ago. We revamped it, updated it, sent it out to first-time properties, or potential properties that can be on a tax sale. Forego nothing in hobby township.
So, this would be mailed to the tax, the property owner?
Yes, at their, at their property is potentially up for tax sale. If they would come in and either pay to take it off tax sale, make arrangements.
Okay.
Potentially forebelling any more.
To stop the process?
Or any more fees being added on, because once I certify, there's another 150 bucks that goes on and they got, not only do they got to pay, they got to pay everything up to the full tax.
Did not know that.
So, we've had a lot of positive response.
Good.
To it, we've had people that, oh God, I didn't know I was that far behind, come in. They'll either pay, they've paid everything up to, including fall taxes, or they're in a situation, I can only pay, what's the bare minimum I can pay to give me a chance to get? And we've had a few of those that have paid just the tax sale to get it off, and then they're coming in and working on the rest of the back taxes. But pleasantly surprised at the response, which I'm glad, because that's just less. response, which I'm glad, because that's just less.
Good.
Got to worry about a tax sale time.
Yep, good.
So, other than that, it's our slow time.
Good. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Kathy? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay, what's next? Oh, the library board appointments. And we've got two. Let's see, the first one is, nope, not that one. The first one is Renee Obermeyer. She is finishing her four-year term and would like to be reappointed for another four-year term, and that would be from July first, two thousand twenty-three, and end June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Any comments? Is there a motion to approve? Pete moved to approve, is there a second? Randy seconded, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Carry six, zero. Do I sign anything on this? I think you, we're at, just the, right here. Okay. And the second library board appointment is, let's see, Paul Zartman is going to complete an unexpired term because Linda Wenzel, who's on the board currently, that's already a four-year term, has moved out of county, so Mr. Zartman would fill that term, remainder of the term, from July first, two thousand twenty-three until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Any questions or comments about Mr. Zartman completing this library board term? If not, is there a motion to approve? Steve moved to approve, is there a second? Pete seconded, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six, zero. Okay, next on our agenda, Fedco Board Appointment. So at our last maybe council meeting, we, we suggested if anyone was interested in being the council and commissioners, I guess, Fedco Board Appointment to contact Christina if they were interested. Did anyone contact you?
Not at all.
Other, at one time Randy Gunder was interested.
I thought I contacted her.
Yes, I thought you did too.
Yes, you did, that's right, outside of you, no one else.
Outside of you, okay. And you're still interested in filling the board appointment?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. I will tell you that Michael sent me an email saying that another gentleman who lives at, was possibly interested in being our board appointment. Charlie Sparks, am I saying that correctly?
Charlie Sparks.
Okay. And he lives at the lake.
Yeah.
Okay. And he had expressed interest, found out about the Fedco Board Appointment and he expressed interest to you and you sent me an email saying that he was interested?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's have some, let's more, let's have some discussion about our board appointment to the Fedco Board. I, I don't know who, I don't know Mr. Sparks, don't know him at all. Our, our board members, are you interested in having the board appointment be someone that sits on the council or the, or commissioner? Do you want to allow more time for the people to express interest? Do you want to have Mr. Sparks come and talk to us? Let's have a discussion about the Fedco Board Appointment. I kind of need to kick the can down the road much longer, but that's just me. Okay?
Well, I, I guess I'll jump right in on that and, and give you my opinion, and of course, my opinion, but I feel like, you know, we're, we are appropriating money towards this, and I think that it would be a wise move to have someone on our council on that board. This is what I feel.
No, man.
I'll sound like a broken record, but I've said that all along, that I think the county and the city should have an official on the board, and I sent you an email that tonight was also interested in.
Are you, and you're still interested in being?
Yeah.
Sitting on?
The Fedco Board.
The Fedco Board, oh, boy. Okay. Okay.
That's just my opinion. I feel like that, that the public would have liaison, so to speak, to ask questions and then not necessarily discuss private deals and works, but I've said that all along. I think there should be an official from the county and the city on the Fedco Board.
I understand that.
Not politically, just for, just for the reason to, to help with the taxpayers for questions and funding issues.
Okay. Understand. Don't disagree. Okay, board members?
I don't, I don't like pinning nothing against, but pitting one against another. Randy was the first one to speak up.
About expressing interest being on the?
About expressing interest.
Okay.
I mean, both are capable, there's no doubt about that. And Michael, gentleman, I have to take your word for it, and I don't think you would tell me wrong, but.
He, I'm, this is your.
I know Randy and I know people.
This is your appointment. This, you know, I just passed on, he's not here right now because he's, he was on vacation, but he had expressed some interest in it. I'll give you a real quick background, it doesn't, I'm not advocating him informing, but Charlie's been down in Kokomo for years and years. He's been in the whole area for thirty years doing economic development. He's partially responsible for the EV plant that's coming in down there. About, in the nineteen nineties, I think it was, he actually ran, headed up the old Department of Commerce at the state level. So, I mean, he's state down to local and everything. He's down to one day a week at Kokomo and still working on the EV plant there, but lives in Rochester and has expressed interest in helping Rochester grow. So that's, you know, and he's, that's all you really know about him.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
So, so whether he were, it sounds like whether he was a Fedco Board Appointment or not, he would really be a good advocate?
Oh, yeah.
Advocate to move the county forward and, and knowledgeable and beneficial, so, so he's a good guy to?
I know Charlie.
Have in our corner no matter what capacity.
I would agree with that. I've known Charlie for thirty years.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll put it this way, if he wanted to run that organization over there, I'd be his assistant, no problem. He's that good.
Wow.
And nothing against these gentlemen.
Yes, yes, understood, noted. Okay, so it sounds like we have to decide a couple, so first of all, do we want to consider Mr. Sparks or do we want to make a decision about the board appointment between Randy and Pete?
I said Randy and Pete.
Okay, I, I agree with Steve.
Because in December, Brian comes off.
Brian Goodman?
No, well, that, yeah.
Yes.
Brian Goodman.
And so there's, you know, if the city wants to point this gentleman or they want to point one of their own?
They can do that.
There, they can do that.
True.
And this way this gentleman can learn more and they can learn more about him.
Good idea. Yes, good idea. Okay. Both Pete and Randy have expressed interest.
Let Marbussle.
I'm kind of of the position, too, that Randy expressed interest first. Of course Pete's qualified, they're both qualified, but I, I just think it's kind of, I don't know, first come, first served. Randy expressed interest first, so that's kind of my thinking. Other thoughts, board members?
Randy's expressed his desire to learn more about Fedco, too, so he said that publicly in our meeting, so I think that's a strong plus there, too. Not that Pete hasn't, but.
Just vote on it, I'm a boy, vote.
Okay. They're, they're both qualified, okay.
I make a motion for Randy, just because he stated it first.
Okay.
Nothing else.
Motion has been made by Ron to appoint Randy as our Fedco Board Appointment, is there a second?
I'll second with a comment. We had two board members before, when one couldn't go to a meeting, they called the other one to go and be there.
I think it's pretty, that makes pretty good sense.
Okay.
Because that's one, I mean, certainly will fill in.
That's a good idea.
That is a good idea, Lori, okay. So, so would you be willing, would you be willing to be the backup board appointment if Randy couldn't attend Pete? Okay.
That sounds good.
All right.
If they wanted to attend, they'd attend anyway, right?
Do what, say again?
If Pete wanted to go attend any meeting, he could go if he wants to, right?
I don't think they're open to the public.
If they're not open.
They're not open to the public.
Yeah, we can't, we're.
No, they're not open to the public.
But there's a lot of traveling meetings outside of immediate meetings, that's why it's getting.
And, and so I have to just, just state for the record, just to reiterate, there's a lot of confidential information that is shared at the Fedco Board Meetings that you can tell no one, not even Ron, you can't tell anybody anything. Okay.
Sounds like home.
But you're, you're welcome. All right. So a motion's been made by Ron, seconded by Lori, to make Randy our Fedco Board Appointment with Pete as backup. If Randy can't attend the board meetings, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries four, 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 warrant, and you guys aren't voting.
Sorry.
And they both, both Randy and Pete are staying. You guys are fine. All right, what's next? Minutes. The minutes.
One question.
Okay.
When we get down to the minutes on?
There's two separate sets of minutes.
Yeah, May twenty-second, so I'll do only the first and first and go to May twenty-second?
I do.
I just have a question, and I may be wrong.
So our, so I'm going to talk about the May, our, our May sixteen county council meeting minutes first.
Okay.
Is that the one you have a question about? No? Okay. So has everyone read the minutes from our May sixteen county council meeting?
Yes.
And is there any questions or corrections to the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the May sixteen county council meeting? Lori moved to approve, is there a second? Steve seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six, zero. The next seven minutes are the May twenty-second meeting minutes, and this is when we met for, to review and approve appropriations, and only Ron, myself, Steve, and Randy attended that meeting, so they're the only four that invoked.
And that's the question I have, because on the form I have, it says Randy Gunder absent.
Oh, that needs to be corrected.
Is it in the form?
Yeah, some of them.
Four percent.
Okay. I'll, I'll cross it out. Okay, thank you, thank you for noticing that. And to that, I'm going to sign the May seventeenth minutes and pass. The May seventeenth minutes and pass. And the May twenty-second, Randy Gunder, I kept. So I cross out his name and I'm writing absent under Chase, because Chase wasn't here.
That's true.
Okay, so I'm, I'm there. All right. So Ron, Steve, or Randy?
No, where are you at now?
So, so, and myself.
Phil, me.
Yes, we're the only four that can vote on the, the May twenty-second meeting minutes.
Ron, Randy, Pete.
And Steve. You and I, Steve, so Steve, Steve, Steve moved to approve.
I see Steve is also listed as absent.
It is, okay, I'll cross that out.
Is it correctly topped, though? In the, who is present?
Yes. Okay, yes. Okay, so Steve moved to approve and Ron seconded, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand, carries four, zero, with the correction, that's correct. And I'm going to sign and pass for signatures if you attended this meeting. Next, transfers. We have one transfer. This is for, from Mike Morris, prosecuting attorney. He's transferring from software, five hundred seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents to Office Supply, the, the explanation, the office supply line does not have enough money to cover the quill plank. Were there any questions or comments regarding this transfer? If not, is there a motion to approve the transfer request? Ron moved to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Lori seconded, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six, zero. Next. Okay, Pete, you can't vote on some base. Next. County General. County General. The first is for the EMA Office. Deputy Director, twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty. One thousand four hundred and forty, for a total of fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety. Craig has been working twenty-three to twenty, the explanation, excuse me. Craig has been working twenty-three to twenty-eight hours a week before taking the directors. We didn't know the true demand of both positions. The EMPG grant pays up to fifty percent of the director's salary. Okay. And the next from County General by the network administrator, shifting maintenance wages to the maintenance budget, eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Is there any questions or comments about the appropriation request out of County General? If not?
Yep.
I know, I am too. So explain this all to us, Christine, Christina?
I had to do with the removal of the ten thousand dollars when they removed it from Josh's job description and put it in the maintenance director who's now Kerry Fear. So I reduced the ten thousand dollars out of Josh's budget and then appropriated it into the maintenance director's budget. and then appropriated it into the maintenance director's budget.
Okay.
And then there was still additional needed for all the other line items.
Oh, for the, okay, so, from the courthouse?
Yes, that's where Kerry's being paid for.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Would that be a transfer, so that'd be in department?
So, so the left?
I can't transfer from one location to another just within?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I reduced it out of Josh's.
Thank you, that's my question.
So this was just, just red tape, which you can and can't do.
Yes.
Gotcha, thanks Lori, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Much improved.
Lori moved to approve, is there a second? Randy seconded, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Pete's gonna abstain, I reject.
Well, from the EMA one, yes.
Okay, motion carries five and a half. I guess. Five and a par, five and a partial. I'm gonna pass to sign. And the next one. This is, this is, I'm writing in hurry. The auditor, flat book, $4,000 to scan transfer and flat books and add to the public portal. Any discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve? Randy moved to approve, is there a second? Lori seconded, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. And the next one, this is, I think, of Gail. Yes, this is Gail. These are the two invoices Gail was telling us about for equipment. $43,367, uh, $43,367.12 Two invoices remaining for jail construction on the tower. This was not adjusted on the previous for jail construction fund. This will be appropriated out of the communication. 1222 fund, FCC licensing, moving and upgrading miscellaneous equipment. Ron moved to approve, is there a second? Who said it? Steve seconded, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero, Pete abstained. I'm passing for signatures. And the next one, health department, COVID testing. For supplies, vaccines, maintenance equipment, for a total of $4,315 to appropriate the money for the 2023 to help operate the immunization clinic. Is there any discussion?
That's still going?
Yes, if it's, if COVID testing and vaccines, is it still going? I have, I don't have a clue.
I'm gonna take a look.
I don't have, I don't have a clue.
I'll read that too.
So any other questions that I can't answer? Is there a motion to approve? Sorry, is there a motion to approve? Randy moved to approve, Steve seconded, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries, are you, are you abst, are you not voting?
I'm voting, I'm voting for it.
Okay, Randy, Randy, you voted for it, yes?
Yeah.
So motion carries five, four, and Pete was against. Pete voted no. Okay. The last additional appropriation. This is the highway department, $70,200 for the power room. Any questions or comments? If not, is there, Steve moved to approve, Pete seconded, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Okay. That's the last of the additional appropriations. We're down to old business. Pete, old business?
No.
Randy, old business?
No.
Lori?
No.
Did you say no, or?
No.
Or, okay, Steve old? Ron? I have no old business, Christina?
No.
Anyone in the audience, well, there's no, we're not here. Okay, no, there's nothing out there. New business? Pete?
No.
Randy?
No.
Lori?
No.
Somebody ever talked, I've got lots. Steve new? Ron?
I have one question, and I should have asked it last night, and I didn't.
Okay.
Cause as I was leaving here, I'm sure, I asked a question, actually made a comment. And I should have asked, the $15 million that they approved, was that just a pass through to go to the state from?
You're talking about settlement?
Yeah, what was that?
That's settlement, that's distribution of taxes.
That's the distribution of all the taxes that were collected to each township of?
Okay, I mean, I should have asked a question last night, and I did. Because it does sound like an awful lot of money, but it's basically that's your, I mean, it goes to the state, or is that what we?
No, that goes to each individual, part of it goes to the state, but it also goes to each township, city, town, every entity in.
Our distribution to everybody in the county, is that including our, the county?
Yes.
The county fund as well? Okay, and then there were two of them, and I think I know what they were, but again, just for general knowledge, the two lit funds, both of them were over $1 million.
Yeah, one was a lit supplemental, no, no, the, the income tax all goes out together.
Oh, okay.
But one was a supplemental which we get, usually we only get it once every couple of years. This one was actually a really big one, we're not used to getting a supplemental.
Yeah, I was surprised.
The state's setting on extra money that they pass through to the county. And the other one is just the normal local income tax that we would have raised based on income tax collected in the county.
Okay, all right, well, afterward, I got home thinking about that, and they should have been more upfront to the individual, though. Cause it does sound like a boatload of money, but.
And, and?
Normal business.
Yeah, and what, you said, that the state, the state sits on?
The lit supplemental, once they collect a certain threshold, they'll pass it back to the counties. So for us to have gotten that much money, they're passing a lot back to the county.
And how much was it? I guess I didn't hear.
1.6 million.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, it was, it was huge, it was like.
It was more than our monthly distribution.
Yeah, it was way more than monthly.
So it was totally unexpected, oh, thank heavens, thank heavens. What did I do?
Yeah, cause when they first come in, I'm like, holy cow, where did this come from?
That's all I?
That's all you have? Okay, uh, so I have, so first, I have a couple, I have a couple, I have a couple things. First, I wanna tell you what the, so the county's portion of the host fee distribution for February, March was $54,333.67. And second, uh, secondly, cause there's three, secondly, who, huge kudos to our Mr. Steve for all of his hard work for the flags and putting on the cemeteries for the veterans, all the hard work that he's done. Kudos to you, Steve, it's most appreciated. You spearheaded that, and you, and you're appreciated.
I appreciate it, and I'll thank the council, the commissioner, like I said, the city council, mayor for everything they did too.
Contributing, but you did the light work, the hard, hard work, so kudos.
Your contributions will deserve a right.
Yes. Okay, and lastly, if need, we have to schedule two dates in July for budget presentations. And Steve made a good point last night, and I, I think it's a fabulous point. Steve, do you have a suggestion of a date?
Do you wanna do on the day of our Tuesday meeting next month, and just start at nine and try to get as much done as we can before the council meeting?
So that would be July 18. And, and then I was asking Christina, shame on me, without your permission, Steve, if she was available on the 18, she said that she is, and she then recommended, do you guys wanna start at, earlier than nine? Maybe we can get it done in the day, you guys start at eight or eight thirty, maybe we can get it all done in the day?
Should be.
Thoughts?
We start at seven, if you have one, okay.
It doesn't matter to me, I'd better do it, I'd better do it one day than two partials, personally.
Well, it is not a given, the council tries to squeeze everybody in, you know? So, so July 18, is that okay with you?
That's fine, man.
So, so everybody's schedule is okay for July 18? Do you wanna go eight or eight thirty?
Uh, let's start at eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, our first?
Eight fifteen.
Our first hearing. Eight fifteen. Eight fifteen, July 18, budget presentations. And Christine will, Christina will have pink budget books here for us so we can write notes and to ourselves, because department heads will give their presentation to us and answer any questions about their budget, and then you can write on, on your paperwork.
And if July 19th is needed, I'll put whatever needs to be called July 19th on that day.
Okay. July 18th and 19th, but it won't be more than the morning.
No.
At the very worst, okay. So that's all the new business I had. Did you have any new business, Christina?
No.
Anything, anything else out there, new business, anybody? Okay, if, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Ron moved, moved to adjourn, who seconded? Lori. Lori drew up both ends, all in favor signify by raising your right hand.